Good evening and welcome to the September 24th meeting of the Select Board. Please stand if you are able and join me in reciting our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have, Mr. Wells is joining us remotely today. Good evening, Mr. Wells. I hope all is well. It looks like you might be somewhere north of us on a hill.
Yes, please.
All right. Just say the word if you've got anything for us. We'll keep an eye on the Zoom, too. Our next item up is a public comment. Per our rules, we allow three minutes per speaker and for a total of 21 minutes. I will keep track of the three minutes. Mr. Milano will keep track of our overall time. I don't believe that we have anybody here for Citizen Speak in person. Let me just check our, and we don't have any hands up online. So I think we can probably just go right ahead to our next item. We have a department update with our town clerk, Sue Galvin. And I don't see her yet, so we may put a pin in that one. Our next item, we will come back to the update with the town clerk when she's able to join us. Our next item is a letter of engagement with KP Law for Town Council Services. Mr. Milano?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And we are joined this evening by managing partner Lauren Goldberg.
As, excuse me. There you go.
Excuse me. As the board is aware, the board voted to appoint KP as Town Council subject to a letter of engagement. We have received a letter of engagement from KP Law with a few highlights in terms of how the fee will work. KP is proposing a $99,000 retainer in year one that would cover a wide breadth of services that they call basic Town Council services, which is more or less the day-to-day services. They are proposing at an hourly rate of $265 for all additional work outside of the retainer that traditionally is more intensive work, court appearances, litigation, and the like. There are also some additional services that have additional fees because of the more specialty-related services related to those, and those are variable rates depending on what they proposed. So the overall takeaways are a $99,000 retainer billed monthly as well as the $265 hourly rate, which will be, they've committed to keeping at $265 for the remainder of this fiscal year as well as the next fiscal year. And just to be transparent as to what that means in comparison to what we're operating under today, currently it's a $75,000 retainer for basic Town Council services and a $220 hourly rate. So it is an adjustment on both the retainer front and the hourly rate as comparison to what the current arrangement is.
Great. Questions from the board?
Nope.
Mr. Wells, any questions from you on this? Okay, I can see you shaking your head. I think for me, the only question that I had was for the, I think when we were going through the process, there was discussion about having office hours. Has that been included in this? And where does that, would that fall under the hourly rate or under the retainer?
No, good point. We, KP has offered six office hours per month on a monthly basis included as part of the retainer payment. So it is something I know members heard and were interested in that other communities had been doing with their council. So it's something that we brought to them and that they were willing to propose that the six-hour limit on a monthly basis.
How were we being charged before for items like, you know, if we had to call Peter for something? Was that part of the flat fee?
Generally, like, yes, that would be all kind of under the retainer. Generally, the kind of rule of thumb was anything that didn't require extensive research would be captured under the flat rate. And the day-to-day calls, emails, the day-to-day business was covered under the retainer.
And those same definitions apply?
I am, yeah, I would characterize it that way, and I'm happy to have Attorney Goldberg.
We would certainly welcome, yes, please clarify if you'd like to join us. You might know a few things. Please feel free to introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you. Lauren Goldberg, KP Law. I'm the managing attorney at the firm, and I'm also proposed as the backup attorney for the town. So the town administrator did a nice job of explaining kind of the breakdown, but the type of thing you're talking about, just a quick call during the day, that would all be within the retainer. And we feel that our retainer is pretty broad and that it's going to encompass a lot of what you need on a day-to-day basis. Outside the retainer, litigation, significant real estate transactions, really the type of thing that seems like it should be outside the retainer, a bigger, more intense project. And as I committed to the town administrator, we won't open matters outside the retainer unless we discuss it with him. And I will say there are some things that kind of start out as just within the retainer, and over time they can balloon, and then we would talk about taking it outside the retainer. I feel very confident that the retainer amount, especially with the six office hours, is really going to be a benefit to the town. We're very efficient because we have a lot of experience, and I know your prior firm did as well. But I have confidence that we're going to be able to provide the services you need within your budget. And I will work with the town administrator and with you. If any issues come up with billing, you know, I'm happy to talk about that. I don't want that to be an issue when you all have so many other things to deal with. And the other thing, and I had committed this to you during our interview, is if the retainer amount is too much, meaning, you know, you really don't use the amount of services that would be covered, you know, using that $265 kind of as a measure, I will come back to you with a lower amount. You know, again, it's the long term that matters to us. We're not looking to make a quick buck. We just really want to be able to pay ourselves for the services that we provide. And part of that is that we really, you know, we do a lot of in-house training, and so we're really bringing people to you that are very senior and have a lot of experience. The other thing is for billing purposes, I don't know how involved you all are at looking at bills. I know the town administrator does. Our bills are very detailed. I've looked at some of the previous bills. Our bills, you will see every single minute that's billed in six-minute increments as well as a description, a short description of the work that was done. So I think that'll give you some insight into kind of, you know, whether you think what we're doing is fair and, you know, a better idea of the kind of work that it requires to provide the services. So I think that'll be, that'll be nice to have for you.
So typically speaking, would you usually review, like, you know, starting with a new town like this, after the end of like the first fiscal year of work, would you go back and kind of just reassess to see, is that what you're sort of referring to with, in terms of the size of the retainer and everything?
For the, yes, and for the retainer, I wasn't even talking about a year. I mean, we'll look at it at three months, we'll look at it at six months. You know, it needs to be appropriate, it needs to be set appropriately. If you're using way more legal services than we thought, then we would talk about changing the retainer next year to be more reflective of that. But it is, you know, as I said, there was one town where we went and we picked the number that we thought was right based on our conversations with them, and it just wasn't right. And, you know, three months in, I went back and said, let's pull this back. This isn't, this isn't fair, and it's not what we're looking for. So, you know, sometimes a town will do well in one month, meaning they get a lot more services in one month, and sometimes they'll get less, but it does matter in the big picture, and we will keep an eye on that. We watch what we're spending as much as you are watching what we're spending.
Other questions from the members?
That was helpful, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll take a motion on this if anyone wants to bring it.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I don't have it in front of me, I'll make a motion to approve the relationship and the contract between the town of Milton and KP Law for the services of Town Council.
The letter of engagement?
Letter of engagement, yeah.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Wells. He's going to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hegarty. Where's Mr. Wells' remote? We're going to be doing our votes roll call this evening. Any further discussion? Mr. Wells?
Yes, sir.
Your vote on this?
Yes, sorry.
That's all right.
Yes.
Mr. Wells' is yes. Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So we have approved the letter, and we look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you so much, and I've told you all already, but we are very excited about working with the town and really looking forward to, you know, learning more about how you actually operate and, you know, whatever we can bring to the table, we are excited to do so. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see we are now joined by our fantastic town clerk, Ms. Sue Galvin. So I'm going to just bring us back to that item, number four, which is a department update with our town clerk.
I apologize for being late.
No, we were.
You were super on time.
We were very on time, we're punctual, and nobody wanted to speak at public comment, so I guess we're doing everything right.
Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
So I received a text from Diane DiTullio Agostino, who says she was unable to join on her phone, was joined on, was joined by her phone, but was unable to raise her hand during public comment. So if you wanted to contemplate allowing her three minutes to speak due to a technical issue on her end, on raising her hand through the phone.
Guessing that she is the 848 number?
Yes.
Okay. So is there objection from the board if we?
No.
Okay, I'll reopen public comment to allow Ms. Agostino to speak. If you could promote her, please. Ms. Milano, Ms. Galvin, you can just sit comfortably for three minutes.
Perfect.
Can you hear us, Diane?
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, the issues with the link, the link would not open, and I couldn't copy it to be on the phone call, so I used the phone call. I just wanted to clarify that, that this is not, you know, on my behalf. I appreciate the public comment section, and I wanted to address number five, which was already addressed.
Yes, but Ms. Agostino.
So it sounds like the law.
Ms. Agostino, if you could, just quickly identify yourself and give your address for the record, and then we'll start the time.
Oh, thank you very much, so that I can clarify why I'm calling in. Diane DiTullio Agostino, 147 Ridgewood Road, Milton, Mass. And I am calling in as the former selectman who actually, my name is typed on the contract with Quarry Hills, and it was never signed. So that's what I'm calling in, as the selectman, former selectman regarding Quarry Hills. And my initial comment was on item number five, because on item 19, that's in executive session, I am very concerned, I have mentioned this in a previous public comment, and having been directly seated at the table during these discussions and debate, I am trusting that this board is reviewing any proposals related to Quarry Hills with the new Town Council, since the prior Town Council at a public town meeting did confirm that their firm had represented some of the owners, I don't recall exactly who, and then it was disclosed in news reports that they had, so it was a conflict, they had a conflict, which, when it was finally released, it became more apparent as to why I did not feel the contract was in the best fiduciary interest of the town. So that was my comment. I've told you before, I wanted to repeat it tonight because I found this to be a really critical point with the new law firm coming in and contemplating the current contract. Thank you very much for getting me in there, and have a good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Okay, now I will reclose public comment. And let's turn to Ms. Galvin. So just as a, by way of a quick introduction, so we've been having these discussions every, we're trying to do them most of the Select Board meetings to just have a different town department come in, tell us a little bit about their work, give us a look forward at the year, answer some general questions, getting everyone an opportunity to kind of understand the work that goes on. And so we know with an election coming up and with a town meeting coming up, not that you're ever not busy, but this is particularly busy. So we thought it would be a nice opportunity for you to come in and share a little bit and answer some quick questions, but there's very low pressure, and as always, it's a delight to see you.
Oh, well, thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, and I thank you for your time. So you have something prepared. Town clerks have long played an important role in our local government. In fact, their role is one of the oldest forms in government with roots dating back to ancient Greece. The town clerk's responsibilities are wide-ranging and far-reaching, and with constantly changing laws and expectations, the role of the town clerk looks very different today than it did 13 years ago when I stepped into this role. Most duties of my office fall into one of the following categories: managing, administering, issuing, distributing, recording, and responding. The core functions are vital records, annual census, election administration, public record management, open meeting law and ethic training and compliance, oath of office, town meeting, and licensing for marriages, businesses, dogs, raffles, and storage tanks. So let me just break down what we do. I know you are all familiar with elections because that is mostly why I come before you folks. But vital records. So the town clerk serves as the local registrar for birth certificates, marriages, deaths, and we are recording, filing, and issuing certificates. And all of that is to ensure compliance with the Massachusetts Registry of Vital Records and Statistics, which we are fortunate enough to have the registrar live here in town. She is lovely. She came in and visited me, which was quite the honor. And it's Jennifer Raymond, for those of folks don't know her, she is fantastic, and it's great for us to have her in the town. In addition, the annual census, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, you get it every year from my office, and I'm required to conduct it. And the census is a mandatory survey. It's sent to every resident each January, and basically it's to count the population and maintain official records for our voting list. It also helps with jury selection, veterans' benefits, and other municipal services so that we have an accurate tally. On the slip, residents must verify or correct the provided information, sign the form, and return it to our office, and then we record it appropriately and update their census. Public records, as the town's official record keeper, I'm responsible for maintaining and providing access to public records, including vital statistics, bylaws, town meeting minutes, all in accordance with state law, and overseeing the public requests for these documents. Open meeting law and ethic training compliance. So the primary role under the open meeting law is to serve as the official recipient and poster of public meeting notices, ensure compliance with the law of 48-hour advance notice. Additionally, I'm responsible for providing open meeting law education to the public officials by distributing information materials and requiring their written certification of receipt. I also serve as a local point of contact for boards and committees and the public seeking guidance on open meeting law. And I also serve as the local liaison for the State Ethics Commission by distributing the conflict of into law summary and facilitating the mandatory annual, I'm sorry, not annual. My pages are messed up.
It worries.
Every other year. Oh my God, where are they? Okay, take two. Okay, it does say annual, but it isn't annual. It is every other year, ethics training for municipal employees and volunteers. Oath of office, which I have had the lovely pleasure of swearing all of you folks in, I'm statutorily mandated to administer the oath of office to every elected and appointed official, including members of boards and committees, and to keep the records of those oaths. Licencings for marriages, businesses, dogs, raffles, storage tanks. My office serves as the central issuing authority for various state mandated licenses and permits, which include marriage licenses, dogs, business certificates, fuel storage renewals, as well as raffles and permits. Town meeting. So I act as the official record keeper for town meetings. I work closely with the monitor, moderator, to ensure all legal and procedural requirements are met. While the moderator presides over and regulates the meeting, my job is to provide essential support during and after town meeting. After town meeting, I'm required to certify all the votes and actions taken at town meeting, submit general and zoning bylaws to the Attorney General for approval, submit required debt authorization documentation to the Department of Revenue, and provide appropriation documentation to the Assessor and Finance Director. And then we come to election administration. So as the town clerk, I'm the chief election official. I'm responsible for overseeing all election-related activities at the local level. So this includes voter registration lists, nomination and petitions, ballots and equipment, absentee and early voting, polling place management, recounts, audits, and result reporting. All of this is in collaboration with the Board of Registurers, which you folks appoint. There are three types of elections. They take place on regular schedules, customarily set by law. In Milton, the annual town election happens last Tuesday in April. State elections are always an even number of years, and presidential elections and primaries are every four years. Separate from that schedule, for those of us who run elections, there are nearly two types: general elections and primaries. So a general election means everybody who's registered can vote, and there's only one ballot used. A primary is a party election to select the party candidates that would face off in the final general election. Each party has its own ballot. If you're unenrolled in a party, you vote the party by choice. If you're enrolled in one of the recognized ballots, you have to choose either a Democrat or Republican ballot. So as far as elections occur, the chain of custody is very important in voting in elections. There are three really important items: the voting book, poll pads, which we use here, ballots, and the voting tabulator. Some of the main items that you need to be prepared for for every election is the voting list, the ballots, and the ballot box, the voting tabulator, training the election workers, candidate and media outreach, communication with voters who cannot get to the polls on Election Day. For example, if a voter won't be in the town on an election date or wants to vote early, they can apply for a vote-by-mail ballot for a state and federal election for the entire Or they can vote early in person for our federal and state elections on a scheduled date that the town is conducting those. Currently have just shy of 1,000 applications currently for the upcoming election. So the ballot has to be returned to our office by the close of polls on the election day to be counted. It cannot be turned in at the polling locations. It has to come to my office. Tremendous amount of work and organization is required to run an election. We like to think of it as throwing a wedding. You invite a lot of people, and you're not sure who's coming. So it's the same work whether everyone comes or just two people. Of course, I would like everybody to vote. Now that the election's on track, there's about 100 steps to conduct an election that has to be followed: to perform the legal postings needed, count blank ballots, to train and assign election workers, to proofreading the ballots. Two of the most important activities are testing the voting machines and ballots and training the poll workers. Every single voting machine that is used in an election must be tested with every type of ballot to ensure the machine is properly counting the marks on the ballot, to ensure that the machine isn't overcounting or undercounting the ballots and counting write-ins or anything of the like. This has to be conducted before every election at least four days, and the results of those tests have to be sent to the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Training elections to make sure our election workers know the election law and what to do in unusual situations is of utmost importance. Voting lists. That is a list of all the registered voters in town. Here in Milton, we use poll pads to keep track of that, but we also do have paper lists to ensure that if the poll pads aren't working, that voters can still continue on. All of the voter ballots must be counted. My office is responsible for accounting for each and every ballot. That includes the early voters, the absentee voters, and the voters who vote on Election Day. The average flow for Election Day is at 5:00 a.m., the police escort myself and DPW election logistics team to transport our ballots, the ballot bins, to the precincts along with the voting tabulators, the poll pads, and the supplies. Election workers are there. They set up the materials, the supplies, and then the polls are declared open at 7:00 a.m. Typically, my phones ring all day long with questions from voters. Can this voter vote here? Is it the father or the son? Different addresses if they're a Milton voter, but are they still registered somewhere else in Milton? And what we're doing is trying to accommodate each and every person so that they are able to vote. So checking in the voting list, getting the ballots marked, and putting the ballot into the tabulator is our goal for every voter. Registered voters and voters we aren't sure about, for example, they can still vote by a provisional ballot, and we'll do the research after. And if they are proven to be able to be counted, they are counted after the election. Every ballot has to be accounted for on Election Day. And so at the close of the polls at 8:00 p.m., the work for the poll workers just really begin. So they have to count the unused ballots. They make sure every ballot that went into the voting machine was marked off and that the list matches how many voters actually were cast. Then they count the ballots that came out of the machine to make sure all three coexist. The ballots that were hand-counted, they mark those and tally those. The ballots that had write-ins, they mark those and record that. Any ballots that were spoiled, they count those and keep a tally of that. And then the ballots that were tabulated during advanced processing remain locked up at Town Hall. The actual ballots are locked in the safe, but the tabulations aren't able to be printed until 8:00 p.m. after the polls close as well. So every ballot is counted. Everything is accounted for before the election workers can leave for the night. Once they finish, that material comes back to my office, and we have to merge, if there is advanced processing, with the Election Day voting together before we can read results. And let's see. Wind it down. So the unofficial results of the ballot process on Election Day are reported at the precincts and then delivered to my office. I already said that. So finally, the work we do in the town clerk's office is essential to a smooth operation for our community, from elections to vitals to public service and everything in between. My office team plays a vital role in ensuring my office not only meets expectation but goes above and beyond. I appreciate their commitment to public service and for being such an outstanding team. I'd also like to acknowledge the election workers for their dedication, integrity, and excellence. I feel very fortunate to work with these individuals, as well as the entire workforce in the town that make up our government body.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry for the clumsiness.
No problem at all. Do you have time to take a couple of quick questions?
Of course.
If the members have any. Questions for the clerk?
So Ms. Galvin, thank you so much for all that you do. You know, especially in the current times, you know, I mean, you and your staff do a great job, and what you do is like fundamental to democracy and something we should never take for granted. And a lot, we recognize as being individuals who've run campaigns and had our own volunteers at the polls and such, you know, what it's like to manage, you know, a town-wide thing like that. But also, too, just like what you guys do outside of elections to make sure everybody's counted and, you know, it's, I mean, you really have your finger on the pulse of citizenship in the town. So thank you. You know, and for me, you know, my major question, you know, that I think I ask this question generally for everyone who comes before us is more operational, what are your, you know, what are your, what keeps you up at night? What are your big challenges that you see for the next year? And how can, you know, how can we have?
If you're sleeping soundly, how do you do that?
Yeah, right. Just the awareness of that, you know, just recognizing that you all do so much. You know, what are you focused on or what are you, you know, what do you, what would you change or do better if you could wave a magic wand?
Do better is always a goal, right? You can always do better in everything.
For all of us, yeah.
So I would say, you know, being more available. You know, there's never enough hours in the day to read everything you're supposed to read and be on top of everything you're supposed to be on top of. And I have the luxury of having a really good team that supports me so that I am able to, on most days, keep up with my emails, keep up with the matters at hand that have to be done. Of course, there's always those that are pushed off to the side either by not wanting to do them. They're less glamorous. Not that anything is glamorous, but, you know, I think we have a pretty good operation, and I'm always looking at ways to improve. Space would be our biggest obstacle, I think. You know, I don't know if anybody's been in our office, but we've had a big container in our office since the last election because we don't have a place for it. So that would be our biggest obstacle. It would alleviate a lot, provide us with more spots to store all of the stuff that we have to store.
Got it.
So.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
No questions for me, Sue. We had a chance to speak recently. I want to say thank you to you and your staff and everyone in Town Hall for the work that you do, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Right back at you.
Just a quick question for me, Sue, and again, thank you so much for being available and for preparing such a detailed review. I think anybody that wants to understand what a town clerk does, I mean, you've started us in ancient Greece and brought us up to the present, so I think you've done an excellent job there. Two questions that I get asked on a fairly regular basis. If someone wants to be a poll worker or volunteer at the polls, do they reach out to you directly?
Yeah, so they should reach out to me, and then I would forward the list to you folks for approval. And, you know, usually always right before elections, people get sick, they can't show up. That's really when we are looking for individuals. So anybody who's interested would love to have them. We'll put them on our list, and more than likely, they will be used.
Wonderful.
So, yeah, we'd welcome that greatly.
Thank you. I know per what Ms. Hegarty was talking about earlier, I think a lot of people are very interested in keeping and maintaining this process.
Yeah.
And so if they can play a role in that.
The only thing I ask is that if somebody is working for a candidate, that they not step out on a particular election. Not that there's anything that they can do, it's just, it gives a...
Best practice.
Yeah, it doesn't give a good impression that the integrity of the election. Not that it could falter it, but...
That makes sense. The other question that I get, and I know that we've been addressing this a little bit in the past, is if folks want to contact their town meeting members to advise them on how they're thinking about an article, what's the best way for them to get ahold of their town meeting members?
So we do have a program that hasn't been highly embraced, for lack of a better word, by our town meeting members. Would love to have them all sign up so that anybody who's interested can, but it hasn't been embraced. So right now, it's kind of a rudimentary system that if somebody desperately needed to get in touch with their town meeting member, they could contact me, and I would reach out to the town meeting member. I don't share emails or anything like that. So that's probably their best way of saying it. But that being said, it's not very, it's time-consuming for me. It's not a very efficient manner. So it would have to be something of like utmost importance.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're interested in figuring out how we can do it a little bit better. So I think that might be an item that we can take up as a board, and certainly, I think that's not a great use of your time to be a message bearer. So maybe Mr. Milano will think about adding that to a future agenda about how we might be able to expand it.
Perfect.
Any other questions from the members? Mr. Wells, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Che. I just want to thank Madam Clerk for her time tonight. Unlike the other department heads that have been in and are coming in to do reviews with us, Sue Galvin is selected in her position just as we are. She is an elected official of the town just as we are elected board of the town, and she ultimately answers to the citizens. But having graced her door many times in my life, she eloquently described exactly what takes place in there. You know, people go in there, everything from getting married to seeing, how do I get citizenship? How do I do this? To the anxiety that a lot of people have when they walk through the door for the first time to want to run for, especially townwide election or even town meeting members. So in that aspect, her team, who I know all intimately, go out of their way to make sure that your experience and their helpfulness and their ability to guide you through the process is always excellent, and that comes from just the way you run your office, Madam Clerk, and that's a credit to you and all the staff. Now, sometimes things in there aren't easy, and they can be difficult, and you go out of your way to always greet people with a smile, deal with their issues, and guide them through whatever it is, whatever issue of the day is. So thank you for that. And on another note, just thank you for your friendship and support to so many, to so many who sat on this board, not just us, but who've sat in the time I've been here before, who are always willing to help and answer a question when one comes up. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Che.
You're welcome, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, all of you, for your very kind remarks. It is truly a pleasure to have gotten to know each and every one of you, and I enjoy working for all of you as well as our residents. So when you like what you do, it makes it a little bit easier.
Yes. Well, thank you for coming in. I hope it wasn't too painful.
It was not. I know my presentation was painful.
It was not. It was not. It was always a pleasure to see you, so thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Bye-bye.
Great. So the next item that we have, we've been sort of talking around this a bit, elected official civil discourse training. And Mr. Fers, who's one of our residents, had written to me and asked if he could share some thoughts and ideas about this as well. And I see no reason unless there's an objection from the body that we wouldn't want him to come and speak a little bit. I think this is because it's not, well, I think what he has to share kind of goes a little bit above and beyond public comment, and I would just add that anyone who is ever interested in coming and presenting on anything can always write to the board and ask about that. But if you're prepared, we'd love to have you come up here and join us. And then after your remarks, maybe Mr. Milano, you can update us where we are in the process. Oh, and you've got a compatriot here, too. Wonderful.
Brian Fers. I live at 107 Central Avenue, and I'm a former town meeting member. We just moved out of our precinct, so I'll be having to find another way back onto our town meeting, and also a former planning board member. This is my son, Simon Fers. He asked if he could sit with me, so hopefully that's okay. And he's actually going to pass something out for you that, just as a reference point, I have a copy for the record as well, and I emailed the relevant materials to Mr. Wells a few moments ago. So hopefully, he received the link to that. So thank you for letting me come in to talk about this tonight. This is something that's near and dear to my family, and so I'm just going to read a statement, and then I'm happy to take questions on what I've just handed out. "Five years ago, our family publicly disclosed the harassment we experienced as a gay Milton household. We did it out of exhaustion after years of anonymous targeting. Milton's response was extraordinary. Our community rallied. The offender was identified. And when it became clear the offender was a public official, our then newly-elected former moderator immediately requested his resignation, and the offender complied. Milton stood up for its own, regardless of identity or creed. That is the town my husband and I and our son are proud, or are proud to live in, and my husband and I are proud to represent as elected officials." Five years later, I'm here because something has shifted. In public hearings and town meetings, I've heard comments, and at times decisions justified by comments, tinged with racism and class bias. National polarization has filtered down. Milton has not been immune. To check my perception, I conducted an automated review of meeting transcripts from 2021 to the present and asked to have the review flag coded in overtly discriminatory language. I expected a handful of ins- I expected a handful of instances. There were far more, dozens and dozens, primarily from members of the public, but occasionally from officials. That is unacceptable in both directions. Our officials must be held to a higher standard as speakers and as listeners. When a discriminatory statement is made, leaders should address it, ask for clarification if needed, and if it is discriminatory, note it for the record and exclude it as a basis for decision-making. This is not solely the fault of our boards. Milton does not provide consistent training to help officials recognize and discourage discriminatory speech. As a longtime youth soccer coach in town, I could not step on a field without 12 hours of sensitivity training and annual refreshers. Yet those entrusted to represent all of our residents may receive no training at all on bias, public records responsibilities, or how to manage harmful rhetoric in a hearing. We can do better. Tonight, I'm formally requesting three actions. One, place this item on your next agenda to adopt a baseline bias and civil discourse training for elected and appointed officials. Two, adopt a policy with a practical compliance path. Current officials complete training within 90 days. New appointees within 60 days. And three, create a short-term working group, including me, to recommend specific training options and a simple chair script for addressing biased remarks and to report back within 60 days. I'm volunteering to help design something impactful, but not onerous. As a former planning board member in more than a decade as a town meeting member, I know the time constraints of the boards. The goal is to raise a standard, not to create a burden. Before I close, here is a brief sampling of the flagged comments from recorded public meetings, anonymized here, with the full list and references submitted for the record. I have six examples. Why accommodate people who can't afford what we can? We don't want those kind of people in this town. I'm not racist, but this isn't the place for Section 8. People who live in apartments bring crime and noise. We worked hard to live here. Why should we make room for people who didn't? This isn't discrimination. It's just common sense. These words have been entered into our public record and at times have been weighed in our decisions. Milton and the values we showed five years ago are better than this. Thank you for your time and service. I look forward to working with you to put this standard in place. I've attached a practical one-page proposal for your consideration. As I said, I have a copy for the record. And I'd love for this to be the basis for a committee to look at how Milton can do better on this topic. And then just as an appendix to that, I included all of the list of anonymized quotes. I am not sourcing them. They're not cited by which meeting it was from or who said it. But if all of the meetings were watched, they would be heard, and I'm sure others would be heard as well. I think this is an opportunity for Milton, really, to represent to other communities that we care deeply about all of our residents, not just people who have lived here for a long time and fit a certain profile that maybe is reputationally how people see our town. I love how diverse this town is. I love going down Brush Hill Road and ending up in Mattapan and being able to drive through the Columbines, but also walk through a great dense neighborhood of multifamily homes. So I just hope that we can find a way to make sure that our chairs and our elected officials are representing the best of us. And obviously, there's going to be public comments that the board cannot control. But I do think it's incumbent that the board at least call them out and make sure that they're excluded from the basis for which or upon which we're making decisions here. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions from the members?
None for me. I'll wait here for Mr. Milano on the results tapes.
So maybe, Mr. Milano, do you want to provide an update? Because I know that you've also been looking at some of these trainings and different standards that have been adopted by other towns. Do you want to share kind of where we are on those?
Sure. As I mentioned at our last meeting, you know, we looked at a... Sorry. As I mentioned at the last select board meeting, we did pull some codes of conduct which address it in one manner, but not in a kind of a training-type-driven manner. I've been trying to find a potential training opportunity. I've spoken to one potential applicant and who has not yet submitted a proposal. So that's something that I've requested. So we're in the works, but haven't come up with anything concrete as of yet. So I don't have anything actionable at this time.
Okay.
So do we thank you, Brian, for taking the time? And Simon, for you as well? I think this is a very good starting point. And I think one of the things we should think of when looking for services like this is to come up with the scope and understand exactly the problem or the challenge that we're trying to address. And I think this really helps us. So when you anonymize this list and got all of these statements from, you know, the past four years of public meetings, did you... So what was like, what was the approach? Did you take the like, the transcript and like, run it through?
So we don't have transcripts.
Okay. Did you sit and listen?
No, I didn't sit and listen.
Or did you use like ChatGPT or something?
I used an AI program to watch the videos. I didn't actually ask the service to identify the speakers. I didn't really want to know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I also didn't do every meeting. So it was a randomized sample of meetings. I can certainly, I'm happy to provide more detail to counsel or if there's questions about where they're coming from, I'm happy to get more into that. And I have notes and records on that.
Yeah.
But yeah, it was a, it was an artificial intelligence process.
Yeah. I was assuming that, I think that's very interesting. I mean, just looking at this, it's disheartening and it's disappointing. But I don't think Milton is the only place or, you know, whether it's a workplace or a town that faces this, right? And I think that, you know, the way that I tend to think about issues like this or, you know, next steps is, you know, we all have work to do. We all have to have a growth mindset.
Yeah, I think, one of the things I think is important to call out on this list is that some of the language is not overt. And some of the comments, and maybe many of the comments, were not made consciously. And it's an unconscious bias. And I referenced the soccer training for a reason. You know, we have to have chore checks. We have to have all sorts of training around what's appropriate and not appropriate. But there's also things that are taught to us that are done so to make sure that we don't say something to a child that would be condescending or inappropriate in an unconscious way. And I think it's just as important to make sure that we're not doing that to adults as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Because we're not going to get a better environment for our town if... I mean, there's, and, you know, I struggle with it. I mean, you know, even in my work at the state, you know, we all encounter statements that get made from time to time that are unfortunate, that somebody doesn't realize that they may have said something. But the, like, you're not going to get the result that you want or the change that you seek by making somebody feel badly. So for me, like, I personally like programs that teach people how to question statements or call-out statements geared toward, you know, what I was just mentioning. And I think, Brian, you were kind of getting that to that, too, where it's like, you know, this is, we have to have a growth mindset about this and have the psychological safety to challenge these things and to not like condemn somebody in perpetuity, right? And have a healthy conversation about it. I've, you know, I've... I've heard some questions or challenges from individuals, not going to name names, who've cited that they may be uncomfortable with this training. You know, and I think, I think that we, I think it's all in a manner in how we approach it. And to make clear that the intent is not to isolate or make anyone feel bad or condemn people. But truly, the motivation is to make the environment and civil discourse, civic discourse, better, to elevate that. And as I stated from the beginning, it's not just Milton. It's everywhere. But just because it's everywhere, it doesn't mean that Milton can't do better.
Thank you. Other thoughts, Mr. Daley or Mr. Wells?
What was, did that person share what was the reason they would feel uncomfortable with this training?
They just said they didn't want to do it.
Didn't want to do it. I would, I would certainly be in favor of this sort of training as a requirement or a step for when elected officials are onboarded. I think it's very similar to anything you do professionally, where you would sign on and conversations about how do you speak and share and work with people? You are certainly allowed to advocate where people have taken advocacy into denigration of other people. There's so many folks who are willing to run, to be elected, to serve on the boards. There certainly is a lot of conversation to be had about what does that mean when you're now in that space and in that seat and what you represent? And I've said repeatedly that when we are asked and voted into these positions, folks are not just asking us to sit here and sign off on things or work on policy. We are a representation of the people that have voted for us, a representation for the small towns, families, it's kids. It's our, it's our citizens. And so the way that we work together, I think, sends a large message in terms of what is possible and what is right. So if it starts with this training, I'm certainly for that. I think this connects very well to our discussion about our elected officials, starting with the select board, signing off on codes of conduct about what we are willing to say we will do and how we will represent ourselves and comport ourselves publicly. I also would like to see, well, I think we can talk about how this moves forward, but how do you follow up on these things? That it's not just checking a box and that we are acting in the way that's according to what we do in these trainings. So often in trainings or in any sort of promises, it is just, I've watched the video, I've clicked through it, and now I'm done. But in the heat of the moment, those things are very different. It's very different in our behavior. So I think this can be a great step in terms of our conversation. But there's certainly more that we can hold ourselves to in terms of a higher standard. But I would love to have this in collaboration with or part of our codes of conduct for our elected officials. And I think this is also something I think that may go beyond the select board. We have a couple other elected boards I'd certainly like to hear from in terms of what their thoughts are on conversations and our electeds. You know, I don't know if this ends up going before town meeting or the school committee or the planning board and others that are here in terms of what they'd like to see as well. But Brian, thank you.
Mr. Wells, any questions? Okay. So Mr. Daley kind of was reading my mind a little bit, too. I, you know, I think, yes, this is all, this is excellent. And thank you for coming in. And I have one of those T-shirts. It's a different color. But, you know, I do think back to when we used to be able to stand up as a community and say, no, this is wrong. We're not going to be a place that, you know, that condones this. And I think for anyone who's paying attention to this and is worried about, you know, First Amendments, this is not about telling people that they can't say things. It's just about recognizing when things that are said are coming from a place of potential bias and to just recognize that and then understand that as a process of making a decision about a policy. So it's not about, it's not about clamping down or silencing folks. It's really about how do we, how do we heighten our discourse? And how do we make sure that we're really considering relevant facts and not bias and/or hearsay to make important decisions for the town? So on a, so again, thank you for coming in and thank you for putting this together. I, maybe I might look at Mr. Milano here because I think, as what Mr. Daley is saying strikes me is that if we want to create something that is like this, that it probably ought to be applied to all of the elected boards. So us, planning board, school committee, and maybe Board of Health, parks in that group. And then I think if it's going to be applied to all elected boards, it would probably make the most sense for it to come through from town meeting. So what might be, and I, you know, the Warren Committee's meeting right now, we're not going to throw another article at you for a couple of weeks from now. But it might be, this, I could imagine that a working group could start putting together something like a Warren article that could sort of encapsulate this and then report back. And I would like that. I mean, I think if we're, I don't know, are we going to end up having something in the winter? Probably not, I don't think.
If we, yeah, likely not, I would.
Hopefully not.
Next plan not to. Plan to be back in May.
So, and I realize that May is a long time from now. So I want to say that we, we're not going to wait until May to do something. But I think maybe having a policy that's town-wide, it would be best to have it done by town meeting, by an article. But that doesn't mean that we can't start exploring and even putting into place some ideas here on our board as a way to start either setting an example or learning how this works or, you know, road testing some of these concepts. So my question, this is a very, that was a very long-winded way of asking a question for Mr. Fers, is in terms of a short-term working group, and I love short-term working groups, you know, start and end date, who, what are the sort of skill sets or types of individuals that you think would be most useful for a group like this?
I think representative would be the most important piece for me as opposed to experience-based. I think the best result would be a result that comes from a conversation of a diverse group of people. That's why I think a committee is going to best inform this. You know, I hear you talk about the elected boards. I actually believe it should be for all electeds, which would include town meeting. So as far as a makeup of the board, certainly a town meeting member, a planning board member, a select board member, I think you have to sort of weigh making the committee too large, but certainly a few people from the community and hopefully a diverse makeup of the body, representing all that Milton is comprised of. And I think, hopefully, the committee can then work together to come up with the results that meet the objectives, but also take into the concerns that might be had, whether it's First Amendment rights or discomfort. So, you know, the proposal is for a very quick timeframe. I think it certainly would not need to necessarily be that short. May feels like a long time away. The reality is the wheels of government turn slowly. And I think it's probably, it would be a dash to get... I think it's probably, it would be a dash to get there by May. So I think May would be the right timeframe. And I would, I would hope for a pretty interesting, interesting dialogue amongst this group and hopefully a good result.
Thank you. Thoughts from the members?
The part about this that I think I would be hesitant on is the working group. Given the amount of work that folks are already doing and the amount of committees and groups that we have working, I'm not sure that I would move for first to the working group. Guessing that there are a limited amount of options for this type of training in the elected municipal space. So again, like I know, we leave these meetings a lot, but just putting more things on your plate. But I think in terms of the code of conduct and what you provided us, particularly with those examples, perhaps there are more examples of things like this training that maybe the board can review first. And then we can think about how do we move forward? Do we take these trainings and then present them to the other elected officials and then create the working group? But I think we could work towards finding what is possible and then seeing how we would possibly put it together. Because I think that working group is not going to have as much ability to find all these trainings as perhaps our town administrator would with speaking with some other towns or, you know, if you're already looking at sort of the code of conduct. Let me know if I have that. I'm a little bit off base with that.
No, I think in many instances, that's correct, where I have struggled to find an example of another community having pursued something quite like this.
Yeah.
And I don't think I've turned over all the rocks yet. But perhaps, I mean, give me a couple more weeks, maybe in the next meeting I can report back as to where that stands. Because I agree, if somebody else has done it and has been successful, replicate and steal tailored to our needs and then go from there. And that might streamline some of this, but I haven't quite found something good to lean on yet.
I strongly endorse artificial intelligence.
One solution might be instead of having a, a short-term working group, but you know, I think, I think keep, we're trying to keep this, you know, on the front burner these last couple of weeks. And I, you know, and I appreciate, Mr. Fers, you're coming in and helping us to not only have it on the front burner, but make sure the burner's on. I wonder if, you know, we start with this and maybe it's having a, like a public hearing on what this might look like, if we want to think about. I mean, I, I think so many people are concerned with the state of, of affairs in, in political discourse in our country. And I know that certainly I'm not perfect. I don't, I don't think anybody is perfect about it. But I wonder if we start coming up with something and then have a bit of a public hearing on it to get input from, you know, a more broadly diverse group of people. And I, I think, you know, having an idea of maybe having a, an article for the spring town meeting, if we wanted to apply to all boards, but it shouldn't stand in the way of us kind of moving forward on our own with this, as the select board and the executive body for the town to really put something like this into place. So with, as far as Mr. Fers' formal request, I think having this as an item on our next agenda makes sense. If we have at that point, either from your hard work or from the hard work of ChatGPT, an example of, of what a baseline bias and civil discourse training could look like. And then if, even if we, if we can't get training done, because it's, one of the things we've talked about with this is waiting until we have our fifth member added after the November election to make sure that we go through the training. So I still think that that makes sense, rather than have somebody come in right after we've all been trained on something like this. But we can start putting the policy together, I think, now and with the goal of, you know, having a training before the end of the calendar year and having some of, I think a chair script for addressing biased remarks is a great idea. What that might look like would be very helpful as well. Does that sound right to folks if we want to, we can maybe review a document on this next, on, on this, our next meeting's on the seventh, I think?
Yes.
Because of town meeting in October. So we'll, let's put it on the agenda then. I think for, for Mr. Fers, if you have any more thoughts or ideas, if you, you know how to contact us, please feel free to share. I would add for folks who are listening, this is a critical topic right now, I think, in this country, in this town. So please also share your thoughts and ideas with us. And let's, let's continue to think about how we can do better as a town.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And thank you so much for coming in.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. Speaking of warrant articles, Mr. Milano, I believe our next item is our special town meeting, approval of special town meeting warrants. We have, I think, two of the articles that are back here for us to look at with some edits, the MPIC article and the, the lighting bylaw.
Yes.
Do you want to, should, is there anything on any of the other? Do you want to give us a quick rundown of where we are on the, on the others?
Sure, then we can dive into those a little bit more in detail. The planning board has voted to withdraw the sign by law, which is Article 10. So that will, that has been removed from the warrant. That was a proposed new sign by law to replace the existing zoning by law regarding signs and how they can be approved based on comments from Town Council, KP Law, Peter Mello as well, that some issues still needed to be addressed. So the planning board did withdraw that one. They have kept the traffic impact mitigation one, which had much more limited comments. So there's one fewer article. Articles one through nine are what will be going to town meeting. Other updates since then, KP Law has reviewed the warrant. They've suggested some minor changes for legal purposes. All the articles are approved subject to Town Council's final edits. So all of their tweaks are more for legal form than anything else that are going forward. There are a couple of more substantive questions that they've had on a couple of the articles that the warrant committee is still working through at this time. Just going through the list, Articles one, two, and three have all been approved by the warrant committee as well, or rather voted that the town meeting, recommended that the town meeting vote yes on those three. The Climate Action Planning Committee submitted a revised version of their article, which streamlines it a little bit, but keeps it to the same overall goal that had been submitted previously. And this is in response to questions and comments and feedback from the warrant committee, from warrant committee members. I provided that updated version, the article in the packet for this evening. The Master Plan Implementation Committee also, again, in response to questions and comments and feedback from warrant committee members, adopted, approved some updates to their article. Most of them were more minor. I'll note the, the main change was more in hindsight, realizing that the $30,000 was approved for the Master Plan Implementation Committee's use in fiscal 26. And their committee recommends sunsetting the MPIC and setting up a new committee. So now the article includes moving authorization to spend that appropriation to the new committee that is set up. Those changes were also in, in the packet. So those have been sent to the warrant committee. And then that leaves Articles seven and eight. Alcohol and town property, the warrant committee is talking about that this evening. And we'll see what edits they have there. And then the light trespass one, I did circulate today some of their comments. They're discussing it today. They expect to pick it back up on Monday. So the select board could look at some of those comments tonight, think about incorporating some of them, or just defer to the warrant committee's work, since that is ongoing at this time.
So why don't we start with the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The warrant committee did designate Mr. Tagney on both the lighting article and the outside alcohol article to dig into those. And he did call me and interview me at length on both. The only thing is I don't really have, I was able to give him a great deal of broad detail on the outdoor alcohol one. The lighting one, I don't know as well. So to Mr. Milano, I'm not sure where he went. I did tell him, I explained Willie Barker was our former colleague, Ms. Bradley. And I don't know, Mr. Milano, if he reached out to you or not.
He also, he reached out to me, Mr. Wells, and I, yeah, I spent some time on the phone with him this week. So.
Thank you. I just want, I just want to make the board aware that he was doing this.
Yes, thank you. I think for those folks who aren't aware, the warrant committee has implemented a, a, a review process where a couple of members are assigned to each of the articles to kind of review, ask questions, and then kind of come back to the warrant committee with their recommendations. So I think for each article, there's at least two people that have been selected. And so that, I did spend some time with him on the phone on the, on the lighting bylaw. So on the, on the master plan amendment, or amendments, I don't see any, I, I think we've all had a chance to review these before as well. I didn't see anything in there that made my hair stand unend. I think it's all pretty consistent with the, oh, and then are we sharing it up on the screen too? Just great, perfect. I think making sure that, I guess the, the committee is reporting to the planning board, select board, warrant committee, and town meeting. I mean, one question I would have is why do they report to the warrant committee? Planning board, select board, and town meeting makes sense, but if the warrant committee really wants to have people reporting to them, I don't, I don't know how folks feel about that. I mean, it could also just be a written report that's submitted to the warrant committee and it's the same report that goes to everybody else.
I think that's more of the spirit of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be fine. And then, which is also the annual report submitted to the town administrator. I think having a quarterly meetings identified is a great idea. You know, I think my, my worry about something like this is that nothing happens with this. We've had the master plan for a long time and what hasn't, hasn't totally been implemented. So I think having, having a meeting standard is, is a great idea. And I think also making sure that we have designated a member from planning board, select board makes sense too. And to your point, Mr. Milano, on the transfer of the funds, I think that makes sense as well, because this is a technically a different committee. No. So I would be fine myself with deferring to the warrant committee on those amendments. Oh, can you identify maybe, Mr. Milano, which of the edits, maybe based on color, were made by, although I guess everything's unread on the screen, but which were made by KP and which were made by the warrant committee?
For this one, the only changes made by council, we missed an or, and they clarified that each of the, one of the, not more than three members appointed by the planning board, and then the parentheses for that in the select board was their insertion. So it was minor. The rest was made by the implementation committee themselves in a meeting a couple weeks ago.
In response to the warrant committee?
Yes.
So I don't have any problem.
There's no real action required here.
Yeah, just defer into the warrant committee to continue to work on that. Any, any thoughts from the members on this one?
None for me.
Okay. And then moving along, do we want to pull up the, the lighting bylaw ones?
Yes.
Also, these will not fit all on one page, unfortunately. But do members have thoughts about the, these edits? And I, I will, as Mr. Wells indicated, I did speak with the warrant committee about this. I think, you know, their, I think their overall thinking on this was making sure that there was an appeals process that was created, which they've done here at the end of four and then five. And then that was kind of the big one. And then I think they were part of the reason that they, there was also a concern of scope for this article with the language about light trespass on waters of the United States and wilderness areas. Which I, you know, I understand, it was basically, the, the comment there was that this is more of like a dark sky type bill than a light, than a, the lighting bylaw. But I didn't have any, I don't have any concerns about that. But other thoughts?
The only, so I, I know we've discussed this before. But I just, I want to raise it again because it's probably going to come up again in the town meeting. So this puts a lot of the appeal authority in the select board's hands, which I know there's not a good fit for this or a good home for this. But I, I don't know that this is necessarily like the highest and best use for the select board's time, nor is it something like I in particular feel like I am like skilled at calling balls and strikes on. You know, I, I just want to have us discuss one more time as a group, why we would insert ourselves in this.
What would be the alternative?
I don't know. And I'm, right, like it seems like it's that because there's not a good, there's not a good alternative to it. Mr. Wells has his, his hand raised.
Yeah, Mr. Wells, you want to chime in on this?
So I agree. It starts. We're not an operational body. So my thought would be, you have two options here. So is a criminal in the Article Six of the town by law, which would make enforcement, police action? I don't think it really is. I don't think you're going to have to do that, which leads me to the second aspect, which would be, I think we put this in the, in the planning office and put it with the planner, oh, what was the role, Mr. Milano, we had? He's, it's been vacant for a few years now. What was, he was an enforcement officer. What was his title?
We do have a code enforcement officer. But I expect.
That's where this should go. That's where it should be.
That department would be under the bylaw required to do the testing to determine by the requirements if there's a violation. So then I think an appeal needs to travel outside of them.
They'd be conflicted.
And now we're asking staff to be the hearing officer for something.
It's no different than a fight than a dog bite. A vicious dog action in the police department, the animal control officer, who's an entity of the police department, issues, issues the violation. If the person who wants to appeal, if they appeal to the chief of police or with office, doesn't he, whoever who he appoints to oversee that. So I'm with, with Ms. Hagerty on this. This is not a place where the select board needs or wants to be. Just isn't.
So in that case, it would go to the code enforcement officer?
That's what I think. It's, it's not criminal, which means it's civil. It's more of a zoning issue. To me, that puts it on the planning department.
And then in an appeal to that, it would go up the ladder to planning or to?
I think they appeal, I think they appeal to Mr. Milano, to the town administrator's office, whoever he designates, this is the town administrator, wherever he wants to designate.
So here's, so here's a thought experiment, right? Just, just thinking. So, so we're asking a team to make a judgment on light or lumens. Presumably this is like an engineering function, right? And, and engineering skills and expertise, right? Outside of code enforcement, who in the town has that skillset? Who's not conflicted and can call balls and strikes on that?
Mr. Wells has his hand up. Or if that's still your.
No, that's it. No, I put it back up. So isn't there, isn't there, isn't there a, a penalty for this?
There is in the, in the proposed bylaw.
Yes, it's, it's a fine.
It's a fine, right? So the fine would, would be levied at the district court level, simple, similar to another, any other zoning fine or housing? any other zoning fine, a housing fine, or anything that's on the civil side versus the criminal side?
Yes.
So I, that's why I say that's, that's the place for it to go. It's, how are we going to levy fines and who's going to go to Quincy District Court to oversee that hearing when it happens? It's just so far ahead of our skis. And the other, it's not going to happen that often. I, I'm, I'm more than happy with this, more than council with this being code enforcement. Civil zoning issue.
So I was, I was going to also ask, right? I mean, we have a lighting division in our DPW. This may be one of the craziest off the ball. And I'm just, I'm just trying to get creative, right? But if, if we're talking technical expertise, I don't know if they contain it.
Well, it's important, remember, there's, there's two steps. The first step is to measure, to determine if there is a violation. That will be done by staff.
Right.
Homeowner says, that's not a violation, I want to appeal it. Who is that appeal then getting kicked to? So it's, it needs to be a level of authority
Somebody with authority, right?
And can opine and respond to an issue.
But if, but authority and expertise, like you can't ignore the expertise too.
Well, I, I, I mean, I might suggest that, you know, it's a bit like, if, you know, if we're going to call balls and strikes, this is a little bit like the MLB strike zone that they're now going to implement next year.
Yeah.
Where it's either a ball or it's a strike, right? It's not an eyeball call. It's the machine measures it and it says yes or no.
Yeah.
And the homeowner can be like, I don't like this.
Right.
I want to appeal it.
Right.
And at that point, it becomes more of a, you know, it's not, I don't think at that point, they're going to be arguing lumens and luxes and everything else. It's more of a, I don't want to do this, or I've had this light here forever and blah, blah, blah.
We're that confident that it's
And the, the select board, per this article, has the ability to just not hear the appeal. Like, we can find it not compelling that, you know.
Then why have an avenue for an appeal if we're not going to?
Well, I think that you want to give an escape route if there is something like, you know, that is an external factor that maybe the, the lumens don't consider. There's somebody with a disability that needs to have this particular level of light so that they can make their way back into their house when they're, you know, going for their car or something along those lines. Like, that might be something that we, we could as a board find compelling, but we could also just say, I, so I think what I'm concerned about with this is, I've heard from a number of people over my time on select board, that we have a few properties in this town that are very easily anyone would walk by and sort of say, that's a nuisance. That's a lot of light for one house to be generating
Sure, yeah, yeah.
For no particular reason.
Yep.
And those folks have come to us to say, what is the process here? And I, you know, I don't want it perfect to be the enemy of the good. Like, I feel like we can put something in place. If our meeting agendas are suddenly full of lighting bylaw appeals, then I think we can probably say, okay, we need to find a different process for this. If we put it into place and we don't ever run into it, then maybe it's working okay. But I don't want to continue to delay because
No, I'm not saying we should delay past tonight. I'm just raising the, what I think is like a real, or it's a, I think it's a legitimate question. I, I don't think, this has been worked on for a very long time. I'm just really stating, I don't think, I can still vote to go forward with this, kind of holding my nose that the select board, I don't believe the select board is the best location for, for the appeal process.
Maybe an option would be to, to ask the warrant committee to change language to say, the appeal is filed to the select board, the select board, select board's designee or committee created by the select board to hear appeals shall hear the appeal. So then, you know, maybe initially, it's the select board.
That's true.
If the workload is too high, there, the select board designates a hearing officer who will handle it.
Yeah.
And then the third option is like a sign review committee.
I think that's a great solution.
It's not the sign review committee.
It seems like an extra step though, right? Because this is, this is housing related, it's, it's code related. It does, you know, to Mr. Wells's point, it does seem that this enforcement should stay with housing. Because if you're going to be an appeal board, I would think that what we would want is an opportunity where we would overturn it.
Right.
And given the ideas about expertise, to remember Hagerty's point, what is the scenario where our expertise about lighting or a home would ever allow us to side with the citizen, right? It, it almost puts us in a place of being nothing but the representative, as we agree with what's happened with code. They've made, the residents may have a better chance if it stays with folks who are working in the housing and code space and have a better handle on the enforcement and changes that can be made.
Right. That's board of appeals or planning board or
Yeah, what about the zoning board?
Yeah.
So Mr. Wells has his hand up. I want to give him a chance to.
Sorry, yep.
And is it, was it your birthday, Mr. Wells?
No. I don't know, that's in the office. They keep that hanging in the office here. I don't know why it's still here. I think we're going to have a duck game in here one day, all the reps, but
Somebody's birthday at least.
It was mine. It's been here for a couple of months. I don't know why it'll take it down, but. So you may remember this, Mr. Wells, I don't remember this one. So to Mr. Daly's point, somehow a sign review denial wound up before us. And it was like, it should, we should, and I remember thinking like, how did this, it shouldn't have been us. And we wound up overturning the sign review committee and the enforcement officer and giving it. And it was a three to two vote, you know, it was like just, so I'm, my thought is, if we can keep ourselves out of these things, even if there's only one, let's do it. Like, these are operational, we shouldn't be doing this. It's just, it's just not our, you know, next thing they'll be asking us to appeal parking tickets to us, and we definitely don't want to do that. So just my thought. Thank you.
So I, so it seems like we have a couple of avenues. So one could be that we, we just say, we'll wait to see what the warrant committee recommends, and then we can either vote on their recommendation or not. Because my understanding is that they're going to discuss this tonight, they're probably talking about it right now, and then again on Monday night. We won't have another chance to weigh in on this until the warrant's already gone to print. So I think maybe what we could do is we could just take the, this bundle of concerns and go back to the warrant committee and suggest, you know, that the idea of an appeals process is probably right, and the way that it's outlined here is probably not right, and that it shouldn't, we don't necessarily think the select board has the expertise, nor, nor would anybody running for select board think that they would ever be in a position to start weighing in on a lighting situation.
It's also just probably not the right altitude for the select board to fly at.
What do you mean, like three feet above the ground?
Yeah. Yeah. Like, no, but, but
Yeah, I hear you.
Could the zoning board, has anyone, has anyone, and maybe could the warrant committee look at whether the zoning board is the appropriate venue? Like, did anybody, Mr. Milano, did you evaluate that as a potential option?
This language came from the warrant committee.
Okay.
So it wasn't where it started with us. I, I don't know what the other options they considered. The sign review one is funky because it's in the zoning bylaw, but if you don't like the decision, the sign review committee, it does come to the select board rather than staying within the zoning. And the signed bylaw, the war, planning board worked on, did address that by kicking the reviews to the board of appeals.
Okay.
So it did, this is a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. I don't know that there would be a restriction on the board of appeals hearing an appeal, but it's something we can bring back and suggest and also kick to KP for, for feedback because they have not seen this portion of the language yet either.
Okay.
As they might have a suggestion on the proper appeals process and, and the type, right type of board to hear that for any kind of fine or disposition that's levied against a property owner.
Okay.
Other than the appeals process, did anyone have anything that stood out to them on this?
No problem with any other part of that on my part.
The comment I was going to speak on was a little bit about the appeals process. I'm going to guess that JF7 and 8 and Jay Fundling?
You could send, you could send something to Jay directly, yeah.
It was about the timeline and how it works, but that would go, that's going to depend on where we're going to send it.
So I think, if, if the board agrees, it seems like what we'd want to do is take these comments that we've made, share them with the warrant committee, encourage them to explore alternative language around the appeals process, but let them know that other than that particular change, we don't have any concerns that jump out at us straight away. And if they want to, we can continue to discuss this and we can always green sheet it if we need to, with plenty of advance notice. But I think, you know, like, let's let them, they're going to have another say on it before the warrant goes to print. So are folks comfortable with that? And then we can, again, like I said, come to a green sheet if we need to.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Wells, are you comfortable with that? Okay, I got a thumbs up there. Mr. Milano, is that something you could share with, with Mr. Fundling in the committee?
Yes.
Great. Okay, is that anything else on the warrant?
Not at this time.
Oh, do we need, we didn't need to open it, I guess, did we? Because we're not changing anything.
No, we'll bring a final warrant that is ready to be printed on October 7th for the final approval before it's posted and posted everywhere.
Okay, great. So then, all right, well, let's move along. Item eight is the select board retreat. Mr. Milano, do you want to, I think we have, we have a date for that. It's October 5th. Unfortunately, Mr. Wells, it sounds like you're not able to join us on October 5th. Is that something that you would like us to wait on so that you can participate on in it? Or I don't really want to keep moving it down the calendar.
You can, you can go on ahead.
It sounded like we could go ahead with it.
Richard, you were garbled a little bit. You want to just say it again?
So I know you can go right ahead with that thing. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask Richard for something?
Of course.
So, Richard, on, at the retreat date, I think one of the things we're going to set is goals and items that we would like to address. Would you be okay with sending us perhaps a list of things you'd want on that for us to discuss?
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
That would be great.
And as, so Jeff Nutting will be there to facilitate the retreat with us. I did send out a questionnaire from him, if everybody else could get to finishing that as well. I know he got yours.
Well done, Mr. Daly.
And I'll send out a reminder tomorrow with that attached.
Gold stock.
Teacher turns his homework in on dad.
The only time I'm ever going to be the first one in.
Great. All right. So no motion needed on that. Item nine is participate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts settlements with A opioid manufacturer, Purdue Pharma, and its owners, the Sackler family, and B opioid manufacturers, Alvegen, Amneal, Apitac, sorry, Apitex, Hikma, Indivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus. Mr. Milano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is another settlement that the attorneys, attorney generals across the country have signed with the manufacturers, are related to opioid issues and impacts. We have previously signed on to a batch of settlements that, again, attorney generals from across the country have executed. So money is flowing to the town and through the Commonwealth to the town to work on these issues. That money is under the Board of Health for distribution, and they've started working on that. So this is another batch of settlements. The distribution to Milton is a little, is not yet available, but we expect additional dollars to come to the town through this settlement as well. It's 105 million from one of them to Massachusetts. That will be shared between the Commonwealth and the cities and towns. So additional settlements, just seeking your approval to sign on as just about every city or town in Massachusetts is, as are the other states across the country.
Questions from the members?
Are there limitations on how the money can be used?
They're pretty strictly limited to impacts related to addiction, to impacts within the community, to addiction-related issues. So there's, it's like eight bullets as to how it can be spent. The attorney general and the settlement groups request reporting on how it's spent and that it's adhering to those requirements.
Other questions, Ms. Hagerty?
Is the Board of Health the decision-making body on how the money's spent within the town?
It's, the select board had previously voted on that, so it is currently. All grants and settlements are under the select board's ultimate jurisdiction for control. They're, they're starting to get out grant applications now. A grant application process is being released shortly so that groups can apply to put the money, start putting the money to work.
Mr. Wells has a question?
So I mentioned this to Mr. Milano previously, so one of the key things is they want to make sure that they spend the grant allocation they get for given year. I went to one committee meeting already when I first got here where communities, communities are not spending out what's been given to them, so they need to spend it down before they can apply for the next year for additional money. So it's very important.
Can we have, can we consider maybe having members of the Board of Health present on the plan or the approach to get these funds out the door and
How it can be used?
Yeah, how it can be used.
I think that's a great suggestion.
What's the assessment of the greatest need? I know there have been health studies conducted and published recently. I know the work, the work is being done, but I think it's important, I think it's important for us to have some oversight in reporting.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And they brought on assistants on board to come up with a plan to draw, to, to put the money to work and to start accomplishing, as Mr. Wells noted.
Do we know if training on Narcan is part of that?
It's, it's, it would be an eligible expense, but I know there are so many opportunities to do it, it's really not a big expense these days. Like, we've had it for town staff and just had it through, through different groups that'll just offer it.
I wonder too if, you know, there are a couple of, of the road races in town that are, you know, around substance abuse, addiction. I wonder if there's ways to sort of raise the profile for that? Because I, I know from a public health perspective, Narcan training is like one of the easiest and, and best ways to save lives in overdose situations. So if that's been relatively available for town employees, I wonder if there's a way to kind of work with
Sure.
Maybe a road race or something like that to just make more people aware of what's out there in terms of resources. I think having the Board of Health come in and share a plan would be great. You know, addiction is, I think, addiction overdose is a top killer for, for young adults in this country and for, and for other age groups as well.
Sure.
So we don't, we do need a motion on this one, so I'll take that if somebody would like to make it.
I'll make the motion. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the participation in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts settlements with A opioid manufacturer, Purdue Pharma, and its owners, the Sackler family, and B opioid manufacturers, Alvegen, Amneal, Apitex, Hikma, Indivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus, and authorize the town administrator to sign, administrator to sign.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Hagerty and seconded by Mr. Daly. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Wells is yes, Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So, and I think maybe Board of Health, we could think about having them come in as part of the sort of general presentation, and then that could be part of the specific discussion with them. I think that'd be great. Item number 10 is a discussion update, East Milton Fire Station RFP visioning session. Mr. Milano?
I thought I would have a date to share. I don't yet. We're working on dates to get that underway, and we have a draft RFP in the works to share in October with the select board.
Okay. And then maybe just a reminder of when the And then maybe just a reminder of when the groundbreaking is for the fire station. No, we've already had that.
No, the, we are having it on Friday, so we're having a ceremonial groundbreaking on Friday of this week at 11:00 a.m. at the site, which is adjacent to St. Agatha's, 432 Adams Street. So the Fire Station Building Committee invites the Select Board and members of the public to join us for that groundbreaking on Friday morning.
And I'm very pleased that it's on my calendar already. Great, okay, thank you. Item number 11 is Route 28 Randolph Ave Road Diet Pilot. I know that we've started to hear from some residents who are starting to learn more about this. I don't know if you, what you'd like to share now, Mr. Milano, and then if we have any discussion needed here. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hagerty will recuse herself real quick.
Thank you. Yes, this afternoon, MassDOT provided a flyer as well as a butter letters that they're sending out to butters along Randolph Ave. They have also put up a website, mass.gov/milton/28roadpilot, that has additional information about the impacts, along with a map that shows what the changes will look like. They have also provided the final plan, so we have shared those plans with Public Safety, DPW, and others here in town. We're happy to take feedback and share it with MassDOT. I'm looking at their page right now. They do have contact information up on their website for questions. The project email is milton-28@dotdotstate dot m a u dot U S. So contact info is up on the mass.gov page. It is a state-owned road with, so MassDOT will be the place where questions can go directly. We're happy to take them and facilitate them as well in the meantime. And for a start date, that is still sensitively early-ish October. Once a more definite start date is announced, I will let people know. If you've driven on Randolph Ave in the last week and a half, you've noticed that they're milling and paving in anticipation of these changes for a pilot.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the members? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sure, Mr. Don, you saw that email today from Dan Fielding at MassDOT on this, on where they're at with this. The other thing is, just from a, I know a lot of residents and a lot of residents are having concerns, this is a pilot, and we're going to have to figure out, you know, the quirks, what's good and what's bad about it. It's not perfect. It's a, it's, it's a very complex section of road in the Commonwealth, and if this were an easy fix, it would have been fixed 15 years ago, so that's part of the difficulty. The other thing, too, and this is, I really want, because this one's weighing on me, is DCR's plan to go into a 30-day pilot to close Chikatobet completely for 30 days with the intention to possibly close it permanently to traffic, all traffic. And I worry significantly, and I believe Senator Driscoll does as well, I saw he shared some comments the other day, I think MassDOT does, is to how this may impact the issue of bleeding, traffic bleeding off in the neighbors. We already know, we've heard from the neighbors, we already know that once this takes place, this is going to have an impact particularly on Pleasant Street between Readsdale and 28, Hillside Street, Harlem Street, Forest Street, Chikatobet. This is something we have to really watch very closely, and I just reemphasize this to Mr. Milano, because it's very important for both Chief King and Marina to kind of keep a close eye on this, because they are going to do this. And ironically, they're both going to be out at the same time, Mr. Chair. So by the time the pilot's ready to go, and the milling's done, and the cones are in place, MassDOT, DCR is going to close right around the same time. So I think we need to, there's an awful lot of pots in this right now at once that we need to really watch very closely. So I just wanted to give that update, that that is a significant concern. I don't think any of us expected this. I don't think it was expected.
For the Chikatobet closure?
Yeah, MassDOT certainly did not expect it, and I did not. And the funny thing is, I know DCR is offering this as an alternative, but it's a public safety problem for the state police to be dealing with. It's been happening intermittently at the Chikatobet overlook on, as one of multiple places in Metro Boston on weekends. Just close five mile, three and a half mile stretch of two roads into one of the most dangerous intersections in the Commonwealth that you're going to reconstruct anyway. I just, I just, that part worries me, is just additional problems that residents are going to come to us with. So that's, I just wanted to bring that up because it is a concern. It's kind of like a perfect storm coming all at once.
Other thoughts from the members? Mr. Daly?
No, I would just echo Mr. Wells's points about this is hopefully a short-term headache for a long-term solution, and we are reading what we get from the residents, we are heeding it, we are in communication with MassDOT, and even if we may not respond immediately to every email or every note, we do take everything into consideration to come out with the best possible solution at the end of this road diet.
Yeah, I think that's well said by, by both members. I don't, yeah, like Mr. Wells said, I think if there was an easy solution to this, it would have already been found. I think the important thing is, is that we're finally at a point where MassDOT is taking this very seriously, and they're looking at how to make this a safer part of Milton, because we all know that this is, Readsdale has not been a safe road. It's, you know, for, as long as I've lived in Milton, which is now 14 years. So I really, I'm glad to see that this progress is happening. I know that this will, you know, there are always going to be headaches and growing pains with things like this. I ask for folks to, you know, try to remember that we're, that safety is driving this more than anything else, and while it may, it's certainly going to cause some disruptions as this is in place. Where we are looking at this, the DOT is looking at this, they're collecting data on this, they will be in touch with us on a regular basis, sharing the data and, and sharing their conclusions from it. So, you know, as, as Mr. Milano said, there are, you know, there's an email on the project, there's a website for the project. So please provide your own input, feedback, thoughts, and ideas directly to DOT. It is a state road, but we are, we will also help advocate for folks in Milton for safety on this road first and foremost, but also making sure that people can continue to, you know, live and get to where they need to work and get to, get to their, you know, their preschools and everything else that are on that road. So I don't think any action needed from us at this moment, Mr. Milano. Okay.
No, I'll just add that we will post the information that we received on the town website and send out it on the blast and social media update as well.
Great, thank you. So let's wrap that up, and then, Ms. Hagerty, you can come back in now. We've got some one-day liquor licenses to review. I don't know if anybody wants to.
Do we need to list them?
I believe we have to list them.
The motion will address it if.
Oh, because they're all historic New England?
They're listed at, you can approve them as listed on the agenda except for December 7th.
All right. I move to approve the one-day liquor licenses for historic New England at the Eustace Estate as presented on the Select Board agenda, removing the December 7th event, which is no longer needed.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Seconded by, okay. Any further discussion on this? Gilded Age Christmas Cookbook looks like a winner. Oh, no, that's the one that's been removed. Sorry, never mind. Forget that I said that. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? No, this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerty?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And can it be already that we are at the Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few updates. We have announced that the lottery for the affordable units at the Ice House project on Blue Hills Parkway is now open. Applications are being taken. They're due back on November 17th. You can find that on SCB Housing's website, but it's also on our own website homepage, which will bring you to that page for additional information. There are 13 condos available at 80% of area median income. Much more details is, are up on our website, and they have open houses, so you can see the units as well. The Council on Aging is having a fundraiser here on Saturday. The Wardrobe Exchange, we can already see the wardrobe building in this room here. So it's clothing, it's 10 a.m. to noon on Saturday, September 27th, free the $5, $10 per purchase. So please come out to support that, and that's going to support Council on Aging programming here. Town Quick was in already, but the November 4th special election will be here very quickly. The vote-by-mail application is available. Those are due back on October 28th. Additional information on our website. The vote-by-mail application is the same one that's available through the state website, so you can fill it out there. We did receive notice from the Commonwealth last week that the spotted lantern fly, an invasive species, has been found in Milton. So we'll post some information and get some additional information out there, but they're requesting if it's spotted, that you report it, you may kill it as well if you feel so inclined, but this is an invasive species that's been expanding across Massachusetts and is confirmed to have been found in Milton as well. The Assistant Town Administrator, Nick Connors, is leaving at the end of this week. He's accepted a new position with the Town of Swampscott as their Town Administrator, so we congratulate Nick on his new job and wish him the very best. And then Planning Director Liz Manning will start next Wednesday. She attended the planning board meeting on Monday, so she's already paying attention to everything that we have going on, and we're excited for her to start next Wednesday, October 1st, and welcome her aboard. Lastly, I won't steal the chair's thunder, but Porch Fest was this weekend. We made it as far as Shields. I got stuck at Shields with two of my kids for about two hours and did not see any bands. My wife and one of my children did, but it was a great day and it was good to see people out and about.
Hopefully you heard some music wafting through the park, at least.
Well, there was a Porch Fest site across the street from Shields.
Called, called Mr. Daly's house.
That is where they landed at one point, but, no, it was great to see everybody out, and it was a great afternoon, and they had a blast playing at the playground.
Mr. Wells, do you have a question for Mr. Milano?
I do, I do, Mr. Chair. So just to follow up, Mr. Milano, as you know, there's a home rule petition in here at the State House for additional liquor licenses that was.
Yes.
Passed by, I can't remember, was that the last Springs Town Meeting? It has to be. It wasn't, it was last spring, so.
The mayor.
They reached out to us again today. They are looking anxiously for that map, that economic map. I mean, it's only five locations, and I believe one of them we already know, which is Curry College, is asking for one. I was about to ask for one. So I can't, it was brought to me this afternoon, so I can't emphasize enough, December will be here before you know it, and we don't want to lose this. So I, we really need this in here ASAP, so.
Yeah, we should have it in, I would say, this week. I believe it's ready. I just got to close the loop with Kevin on that. We'll take care of it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was told not to let this go tonight, so I wanted to make sure I got it out there.
And then just lastly, I did want to share that the East Milton 40B project is commencing utility tie-in work next week that will require work within the right-of-way on both Bassett Street and Franklin. So they're going to work on Bassett first, make their connections there. It will require daytime closures of Bassett Street after the entrance exit of the Fruit Center. Detours will be in place, details will be there, but there's, this is work that can't be avoided within the street that will require the streets to be closed. So it'll be work that takes a couple of weeks to get through, but they'll do it in phases, starting on Bassett and then move into Franklin from there. They'll be sharing additional information, including maps, and we'll get that out publicly as well ahead of it starting on Monday, Monday morning. And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. From the chair, so yes, Porch Fest was Saturday. A whole host of people are critical to making that event happen, and I don't want to start naming them because I'll miss one of them, but suffice to say that there will be, I think there's an article coming out in the Milton Times that, that will feature a lot of the volunteers. And so thank you to the folks that hosted, like Mr. Daly and, and others. Thank you to the bands that played. Thank you to really just everyone who goes and makes it one of the best days in Milton. And finally, after a couple of years, we got a decent weather day for it, too, which was really, really fabulous. I also want to acknowledge that we just finished Rosh Hashanah, so wishing everyone a Shana Tova, Happy New Year, who celebrates. And I also want to point out that on October 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be a, a Mid-Autumn Festival, Zhongzhoujie, at the gazebo, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on October 4th, and anyone, I believe, is welcome to come to that. And if you don't know what the Mid-Autumn Festival is, maybe that's a good way to go find out. It's, it's a lot of fun, and it's a great group that's putting it on. I don't have anything else, but if there's anyone else that has any, anything that they'd like to highlight from the community? All right, great. So future meeting dates, Mr. Milano, oh, sorry, public comment response. Well, we're going into executive session, so I can't really respond to the, to the Citizen Speak remark, because we'll be, we'll be discussing that shortly in executive session. But I don't know if anyone else had anything that they wanted to respond to that? Okay. Future meeting dates, Select Board Retreat, as advertised, October 5th, 2025. That will be the location for that, Mr. Milano?
I will confirm this week, and we'll post it publicly as required.
And then we are going to, we are scheduled now to have Select Board meetings on the 7th of October, the 21st of October, the 18th of November, the 2nd of December, and the 16th of December. We also have a special town meeting scheduled for October 27th, 28th, and 29th, 2025. Rumor is that this may be a one-day town meeting. I don't know. We'll, we'll be taking odds on that later. I guess we'll see what the Warrant Committee says. Future agenda items, I just want to flag that I know the Equity and Justice Group is going to come in on October 7th to present. We're also going to take up the, the land swap, land as a future agenda item on October 7th. We just discussed having Board of Health come in to talk about, I don't know that we necessarily need to cram them in on, on the October 7th as well, but I think that would make sense, and, and we also mentioned that we would have this, the item of a, you know, continue to focus on bias and training for, for elected boards.
And I have confirmed with the School Committee Chair and Superintendent for October 21st.
Great, so we'll have the Superintendent on the 21st with thanks. Any other items that folks would like to bring forward? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if Nick Connors is on tonight's meeting with us. No, Mr. Milano.
Just via Zoom.
No, but he is, I just saw him. So I know Nick was not here long, but this is his last meeting with us. I know that he's leaving on Friday, and I believe, is that correct, Nick, the 26th?
Oh.
I just want to thank him for his time and his expertise. Nick has a, has a very unique style of leadership. He's always calm, always willing to help. I think back to the first issue we worked on, which was a unique housing issue with a gentleman over off of Truman Parkway, which involved many entities of this community, of the staff, town staff, to rectify it, and he took the lead in that. I thank you for that, and I especially want to thank you for your, you brought a wealth of knowledge from DCR, and a lot of people don't realize that DCR is a significant piece of geography in this town, and I think it's over a third of the total square footage, and your ability with DCR was a wealth of help in so many ways. I just leave you with this, I did talk to Representative Armini tonight, who is the state representative for Swampscott, where you were going. She knows, turns out she knows you very well and speaks very gallingly, and as I said to her, their gain will be our loss. So thank you, everything, and best of wishes and all the best in your new endeavors. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, that's well said. I don't know, Nick, if you'd like to say anything before you're. anything before your, your departure?
Good. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with everyone. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Well, as Mr. Wells said, we've really benefited from your presence here. We're sorry it was a short stay, but we wish you the best of luck in Swampscott. And, you know, come to Porch Fest next year, maybe. It's, we know it's a bit of a drive and I hope that the, the new position works out well for you. Other future agenda items or anything, any other business? Okay. So I am going to then move to adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Milton Clerical Unit of the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Milton Professional Management Association, Milton Public Employee Association, Milton Firefighters Local 1116, Milton Police Association, Milton Superior Officers, Milton Library Association. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the Select Board, the Select Board will not return to open session. I also, oh, can I get a second for that?
Second.
And this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I'm going to move that we adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, Quarry Hills. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board, the Select Board will not return to open session. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Again, roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I am also going to move that we adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to approve executive session meeting minutes dated January 9th, 2024, February 26th, 2024, February 27th, 2024, March 4th, 2024, April 22nd, 2025, June 10th, 2025, June 20th, 2025, June 26th, 2025, and to approve the release of all executive session meeting minutes related to Attorney General v. the Town of Milton at all, number SJ20240078 and SJC13580, Supreme Judicial Court, Suffolk County, and potential litigation regarding a mass general law, C40A, Section 3A. The Select Board will not return to open session. Can I have a second?
Second?
Seconded, roll call vote. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. [inaudible]. Mr. Logoff, I am going to call to order. Now we are adjourned from Select Board. The, a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust. And I am going to now move, oh, did I lose that motion to?
It's on the back.
It's on the back. Oh, great. Thank you. I'm going to move that we adjourn from open session of the meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust and enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, town farm. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Governor Stoughton Trust, the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Trust will not return to open session.
Second?
Seconded by Ms. Hegarty. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Wells? We may have lost him already to the other session. Well, we only need the three votes, I guess. We'll call Mr. Wells an abstention. Ms. Hegarty?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Now we are adjourned, adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and we'll see you on the 7th of October.